I think we are all ready, present, and good to get going. So I would like to call to order the June 2, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can I please have a roll call of all present?
Mr. Chairman, present.
Dave Cortez, present.
Al Davis, present.
Mike Hughes, present.
Kevin Morris, present. As I don't have any announcements as of...
Show will go up.
Hello.
Theresa, you playing with your dog? We're gonna mute.
No, it's Vincent.
Is it the chief?
It's the chief.
There he is. Greetings, Chief Vincent.
Oh, he lost.
Okay.
I like the center square, please.
Exactly.
Can I have devil dogs for a thousand, Alex?
Exactly. Just be careful, chief.
I don't have any announcements this evening, so we can move right into our first item on the agenda, which is to consider an approved liquor license and the expansion of premises and change of hours for the picket fence and possible votes. Diana Doobie has submitted an application to expand her licensed area and change the hours that she will be serving alcohol. She wants to use the outside area annually. So it was suggested that we start with a COVID-relaxed process, which lasts until November 1, until the order is rescinded. Then in September, start the full process, which would require a notice to a butters, newspaper notice, and et cetera. We do have an application in our packets that goes over the hours that she's looking to do the expansion, and I'm not sure if she's logged into the meeting this evening.
I am.
Excellent.
Good evening.
Okay, thank you. I just couldn't say it, "Good evening." I just couldn't put it on my laptop. So I'm only, um, only on my phone. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. And I can't tell you how excited I am to hear about the picket fence reopening.
I need an omelet.
Oh, that's a lie.
So it's recommended that we sign off, approve her application pending final sign-off from other departments, boards, and committees.
So moved.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. So the motion to approve this contingent upon other boards and committees approval has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this?
The sooner the better, she opens.
Absolutely. Hal wants you to, Hal would like you to name an omelet after him.
Well, just so I can eat it.
It wouldn't be the husband or the mistress of this omelet.
Well, I actually have a suggestion for the name of the omelet. If we could call it the most, if we could call it the most interesting omelet, I think we would all think that's appropriate.
I think that'll work.
All right. So the motion has been made and seconded. There is no additional discussion on this. Can I please have a roll call vote?
Over and out.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Al Davis, aye.
Mike Hughes are...
Kevin Morris, aye. So it is approved contingent upon the other boards getting through with it. But again, very happy to see you guys opening back up and look forward to stopping in to get the world's most interesting omelet.
After we're done, you have to message me later. We need to get this down fast. All right, folks, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda that we have is the DCR Park opening and policy discussion. I believe Wollam Lake did open up over Memorial Day weekend, and my understanding was is that they were only using the paved parking lots, so they did limit the capacity significantly. And I think that's their intent moving through the rest of the season, but I haven't heard too much from DCR on that.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know how long this is gonna last. I think it's gonna depend on the governor's orders and what phase we're in and what part of what phase. It's all getting very confusion, if you ask me, the level of detail that you have to memorize to know where we are right now. But DCR is trying to work with everybody. We all do have to note that the regular service bathrooms are closed, and they're using porta-potties. And so that might discourage some people from wanting to use the area, as well as there's no overflow parking. And the One Park policy is still in effect, so as soon as the lot is full, the park is closed for the rest of the day, even if everybody leaves before the end of the day. So that's where we are with it. This is kind of a mixed bag, because we don't want people congregating. On the other hand, the town does generate revenue now from this, and we'd like to see everything get back to normal soon enough. But my understanding from our EOC meeting this week was that police had taken a casual look see, and things were very, very, I don't wanna say calm, there just weren't a lot of people there.
Yeah.
So it was early, it's early in the season. We'll see, when it gets real hot, we'll see what happens.
I know there is a new commissioner for DCR as well. I don't know if we've had the, I know I'd spoken with Senator Fatman, and he was issuing a reminder of their annual meeting with the Town of Douglas, but I haven't heard anything since then.
Kevin, I think that's important to really hit home. We're supposed to have an annual meeting with them, and I know things are a little crazy right now, but if we're not vocal and if we're not persistent, Douglas will slip in the back of their minds again, and we wanna make certain that we're the loud minority.
I agree.
Absolutely, yes.
So, I mean, maybe we'll collectively take turns and kinda hit Senator Fatman up regarding, like, hey, gentle reminder, you owe Douglas a visit with the DCR Commissioner.
Good point.
Mr. Chairman, I think one positive thing from the virus is the use of the state forest. And I know my family, we've been using it extensively for walking, and I think a lot of residents in the town that may not have availed themselves in the past are doing it now. And it probably is a positive in that sense for bringing in people to Douglas who wanna do more rural experience. So despite our feud, which we don't wanna give away anything, I think it's, I realize that the forest is more of a benefit than I had appreciated before.
Well, I agree, Hal. It's a great resource for the town, as long as it doesn't become a nuisance like it has been in the past. So anybody have anything else on the DCR conversation, or are we all pretty much on the same page, that so far it looks okay, but, you know, in light of a global pandemic and social distancing, it's kinda up in the air a little bit?
I hear silence.
I will take silence, as we're all in agreement on it. All right. If there's nothing further on DCR, we can move into the interdepartmental transfers and possible votes, and the originals for this are in the red folder. And...
Can we do these as one motion, Mr. Chairman?
I would think so, but we should probably write down... So Matt, if I'm reading this right, on the first line on this, town clerk salaries and town clerk expenses, the total amount that we'd be transferring is 500?
That's right.
Okay. So what I can do is, I'll just run down through the line items, and that way we know what we're doing. So transferring from town clerk salaries and town clerk expenses, the sum of $500. Highway admin salaries and public building maintenance expenses, the sum of $10,000. And then I have highway admin salaries and highway admin expenses, $3,300. Duplicate item, highway admin salaries and expenses for $2,800. Highway admin salaries and monitor wells, $1,300. Building inspector expenses and building inspector wages, 500. Health insurance to civil defense expenses, $8,000. And health insurance to civil defense salaries, $18,000. Is that the sum of it?
There's no duplicate there.
Well, no, I mean, it was like, what I was saying by duplicate is, if you look down under, the way it's broken down, at least on my sheet, you see highway admin salaries, public building maintenance, and then highway admin salaries, highway admin expenses, because they both say transferred from. So is it a typo on the sheet?
In the title bar of the chart, it should be transferred from, transferred to.
So it was. All right, so from, and so the second one is to, because they both said transferred from.
Right.
So I apologize. So I'll go down through it again, corrected. So from town clerk salaries to town clerk expenses, 500. From highway admin salaries to public building maintenance expenses, 10,000. From highway admin salaries to highway admin expenses, 3,300. Highway admin salaries to highway maintenance expenses, 2,800. Highway admin salaries to monitor wells, 1,300. Building inspector expenses to building inspector wages, 500. Health insurance to civil defense, 8,000. And health insurance to civil defense salaries, 18,000. That's got it squared. So sorry about that. There was, like I said, a typo on the top of the sheet, so I was kinda confused. So I think we could do this all under a single motion.
I would move that we transfer the amounts just recited by the chairman.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Actually amend the motion to allow the chairman to sign the transfers.
All right. And Tim, did you have something?
No, it was that, but I just wanna make sure the finance committee looks at these as well.
Yeah, there are approvals necessary.
Okay.
Second amendment.
All right. So the motion was made and seconded. Any further discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Over and out.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye. Hughes, aye.
Morris, aye. All right. And the next is to confirm date for annual town meeting and review deadlines and possible And let me see. So we were looking at originally saying September 12? Correct. For the town meeting. So June 6 is reopen the May 4 annual town meeting, special town meeting warrant. August 4, we need to sign the warrant and prepare postage for FinCom. The 18th would be the deadline to get the flyer to FinCom so they can vote on recommendations and insert recommendations and commentary into the flyer. August 20, the return flyer to, would have to be back to Suzanne for formatting. The 25th is the deadline for the flyer to get to the printer. August 27 is the deadline to send the special town meeting warrant to the clerk. September 3, printer to deliver flyer to the town. September 5 would be the deadline to send the ATM warrant to the town clerk, and September 8 would be the deadline for delivering the flyer to the post office. So those would be the deadlines. So our next meeting, we would have to reopen the warrant.
Our next meeting won't be the 6th, though. Do we need to do that at this meeting? Our next meeting will be the 9th, if my math is right.
Yeah. There's no issues with us opening it now, is there?
No. What do we, is June 6 the hard deadline, I guess is my question? Or can we just do it on the 9th?
I just wanna make sure that that's not the last possible date you could do it, which kinda means you have to do it tonight.
That's, that's my concern, exactly.
Yeah, 'cause it's...
This is all very, this, this, when she goes back like this in the calendar, it's very rigid. I know it's set.
Then to be safe, we should probably do it tonight. Is that fair?
Yep, and we would need to close it by July 7.
I think closing it's the most important date.
Yeah.
Whether you open it tonight or some future date doesn't matter, as long as it's closed by the 7th. But you might wanna err on the side of caution and just open it, because there's nothing lost by opening it.
I move that we reopen the May 4 annual town meeting, special town meeting warrant, and reschedule it to September 12 of this year.
I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded to reopen the town meeting.
Friendly amendment?
What's that?
Friendly amendment.
Do we wanna list that we close the warrant on July 7?
Do we need to?
I think that's important.
I think we'd have to vote on that after we opened it, wouldn't we? They'd have to be two separate motions, as I remember. Motion to open it and then a motion to close it.
I think what Mr. Bonin is saying is that in the motion, we say to be closed on July 7, and I think...
Yeah, it makes sense.
Right. Yeah, that does make sense.
The reason for that is to give the townspeople the understanding of the rules of the game.
Correct.
I think it's important that we have that there.
Good catch, Tim. All right. Do you wanna...
I would move to amend the motion to add Mr. Bonin's language, that the warrant will be closed on July 7 of 2020.
I'll second that.
Excellent. Motion's been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Over and out.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Hughes, aye.
Morris, aye. That takes care of agenda. Item number five.
Along those same lines, though, Kevin, I think we have to have a long and hard discussion on where a town meeting's going to be held.
Yes.
And if it's now in September, what we don't know is where we'll do it. And I think we should probably study that and come up with a outdoor or creative option, as we discussed previously and as I read about, and I think the Telegram about the Town of Auburn hosting their town meeting on a football field.
I wholeheartedly support your idea of Soldier's Field for town meeting. So if that's where we end up doing it for an outdoor venue.
So what role should the Board of Selectmen play in helping the town moderator make that happen?
Would it make sense that...
Or is that really up to him?
Venue's not up to the moderator, is it? Well, town meeting is actually his gig. That's all him.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should probably touch base with him and see what it is that he needs that we could provide.
Yeah. So, Tim, it would probably make sense, we'll ask Keith to join in our next meeting and start kinda going over, like, the venue and what he might need from us, or how we can help him out in facilitating getting town meeting where he wants it. Because I think that the venue as to where it's gonna be, I think that once we've opened it and declared a date, it's, it's him now.
Okay.
All right. Item number six is vote to declare land as surplus property and possible votes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna request that you pass over it, but if I could just make a couple comments on what we're here.
Absolutely.
So the town would like to, or the administration would like to recommend to town meeting and to the Board of Selectmen that certain parcels in town be sold in order to enable economic development projects to go forward. And there is a process contemplated by the statute for that. And it begins with a declaration by the town body that has jurisdiction over the parcel in question to declare it no longer useful for the purpose for which they have it. We've got one parcel where it's very clear, we've finally extinguished all claims to it, and all lawsuits have been extinguished. So it's now free and clear for the town. What I'm researching on that is to make sure that in the many votes that town meeting took to deal with that singular set of parcels, two pesky lots, the wording was a little bit different every time the motion passed as to what the Board of Selectmen was authorized to do with it once it was free and clear. So I wanna get back with council and make sure that we word the resolution properly. It may be that, and I think this is the case, that town meeting has already authorized the board to go ahead and follow the 30B process to sell the parcel. I just wanna be absolutely sure of the entire travel before I ask you to take a vote. I'd also like to do all of the parcels at once. There are, there's part of one parcel and one entire parcel that are contiguous in another part of town that are very much a part of a proposal. The proposal hinges on an ongoing dialogue between Land Use Council, the zoning official, and the applicants, or the potential applicants for the process, which at this point is headed very much in the right direction. I think we're, we're gonna come to a very solid conclusion. So I'd like to do all of them, all of them at once, and so that people can understand that this is a package of economic development initiatives that are ripe for action, finally, after all this time and discussion. Just waiting for that, really it's one piece to come into place for that second set of parcels to be, to be dealt with. Because if they can't be, then we will just go forward with the one. I think that's probably the most prudent way for me to clue that.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, through, to the town minister, would this be on our agenda for the next meeting then, or do you wanna keep it moving?
No, I definitely want it on the next agenda. I think you're, you're planning to meet weekly now because of these transfers, correct? So it'll be ready for your next meeting.
Okay.
Next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Works for me. Anybody have any questions? Seeing as no, we will pass over number six until next week and make sure that's on the agenda. Item seven is the...
Just a quick comment to kind of reinforce Matt's punch. I think when we brought this issue to town meeting prior, it was very favorable to the Board of Selectmen in respect of being able to act quickly. So I think we're in good standing there.
Good.
Next to it, tell them on the phone.
All right. This brings us to the third readings for findings of fact, declaration of policy, and direction of administrative efforts, and sources of funding during the COVID-19 emergency and economic recovery. Nothing has changed since the past two readings. Would we agree with that, or...
Yeah, that's correct. You can always change it again after if you have. But I think we're all set.
Excellent. All right. So, and we don't need to vote on any of this, correct?
After the third reading, we need to vote to accept it, I believe.
Yeah.
All right. So I would entertain a motion to accept the findings of fact and declaration of policy and direction of administrative efforts and sources of funding during the COVID-19, which has been read over the past three meetings. So moved.
Second.
All right. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Can I please have a roll call vote?
Over and out.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Hughes, aye.
Morris, aye. All right. Item number eight is review board and committee reappointments for FY 2021. Do we wanna go through each one of these?
Have we advertised the potential to other people that may wanna apply to these positions, or not?
I believe all of the openings are up on the town website, and I don't know if we have received any applicants or interest in anyone asking to step into any of these boards or committees that I am aware of.
Do we have Suzanne on tonight, Mr. Chairman?
Uh... No, Suzanne's not on.
No, she's not.
Okay. I know some of these names and positions are highlighted. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, what the highlight indicates.
Term is expiring this year.
Okay.
So those are all the seats that are up. Basically, the entire council on aging. That's probably the largest number of people.
Oh, yeah, they're all up. And they're all, I mean, I'm assuming they're all interested in serving another term?
I believe that for those people that have a yes next to their name, in that sort of unlabeled column?
Yep.
That they affirmatively said that they wanna stay. I don't know why else that word yes would appear to those people's names.
It appears there's not nearly as many yeses as there are vacancies.
Right.
Were they...
Mr. Chairman, it's an important function that this board does every year, given the amount of questions out there. I'd move that we postpone this a week and really get our handles, you know, hands around it.
I second that.
I wholeheartedly agree, especially considering that, you know, the entire council on aging is all up for renewal, and no one has indicated an interest in, in being reappointed. So, yeah, let's move on this one until next week, and we'll ask Suzanne if she can reach out to these folks that are on these boards and committees and determine if they're still interested in participating.
Plus, they all serve on their boards until they're replaced anyway, so it's not like we're holding up anything.
Correct. All right. Well, that works for me.
That'll give me, that'll give me a week to try and figure out how I get off this regional planning committee.
Never.
Tim, you're vital, you're vital to the town's regional...
That's understandable, Tim.
Yes.
We nominated you to serve until the end of term.
Who knows what would happen if you weren't ably fulfilling that position?
Believe me, I remember all this, I do.
With, Tim, when people say planning, we all think Bonin.
And we plan for the possibility of you trying to get off of that. I know, Mike, I know.
As I recall, Mr. Hughes made a motion for you to serve on that even after your term expires, Tim.
A motion I would certainly second if it were made again. No pressure.
I'm just letting you know, I never entertained that motion to that far, but, I mean, as long as you're still serving on the board, then, then you're our guy for planning.
Is there anything in the rules that allows us to appoint in perpetuity to a committee?
Kevin, you muted yourself.
Lifetime appointments?
Lifetime, yes.
There's gotta be something wrong with that.
No, I didn't mute. Our AV guy's getting fired in a minute.
Hey! I clicked one wrong button.
So I was just saying that I, I didn't support a lifetime appointment at the time, but I, I would not discourage motions being made to that, Tim.
I will, I will strike.
I know. All right. So that brings us to approving minutes and possible votes. And that would be for the May 12, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote?
Over and out.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Hughes, aye.
Morris, aye. Excellent. And that brings us to your report, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, we're, we've got three balls in the air right now. We're doing our best to bring them all down quickly and effectively. The first one is filing for reimbursement... The first one is filing for reimbursement through FEMA and under the CARES Act through the state for the funds the town has expended to respond to the COVID-19 emergency. Throughout the emergency, all of our expenses were recorded as they were accrued and scored to a spreadsheet calculating all of the eligible expenses for reimbursement. Our goal is to get as much of this covered by FEMA and to sort of hold that CARES Act allocation, not sacrosanct, but try to nurture it so that we're not drawing on it because we don't know what the future brings in fiscal '21. We also don't know if anybody's going to change their mind about the potential uses of CARES Act money, so we'd like to keep that maximized. So FEMA, we're hoping, will cover 75% of these expenses, and the other 25%, we would use CARES Act because it's eligible, so that there would be no, no net loss to the town. In other words, these expenses would all be covered from one source of federal funding or another. I want to compliment Gene Lovett and Lisa Freeman for doing a lot of this very detailed work of tracking the specific expenses for all the departments that were related or directly generated by the pandemic itself. We had a spreadsheet that we reviewed this afternoon that is up to just about $86,804 worth of expenses, with the lion's share of that, we believe FEMA-eligible. So that, there are two applications running in tandem. The CARES Act is a rolling application, as is FEMA, and we're trying to get all of this submitted by Friday. So what that means is, and when we think about what's going on for folks at home, these interdepartmental transfers are covering our operational expenses right now, we're taking from accounts that might have been in surplus and might have turned back at the end of this year, and we're transferring those funds to funds that are running short in order to stay within our budget. What that means is, is we are not utilizing the emergency authorization that the Board of Selectmen asked for and received from DLS to deficit spend. We are not deficit spending any account to this point, knock on wood, we're almost to the end of the year. And I appreciate all the work that Gene is putting into this because she's approaching the close of the year, which is a very busy time for any town accountant. So she's doing yeoman's work, and of course, Lisa's been through the FEMA process before, and was on top of all of this. Much of what we're looking for reimbursement for is additional staffing that was made necessary because individuals in our departments got sick and we had to backfill their shifts, and just to cover our basic requirement. So not all of that is reimbursable. The overtime portion is the reimbursable portion of it. So that is well underway, and we should bring that to conclusion. Now, when that money comes back to us is going to determine, you know, what year it closes to. Our anticipation would be, we're hoped that we would get it before the end of June, and then it would end up being basically a turnback, and we're closed to free cash. That's the hope. So that's one of the three balls. The second is the budget itself, and the process that I've envisioned is that we would do an annual budget, and then implement that budget month to month, and request from DLS through the Board of Selectmen, the authorization to deficit spend those three months, and then when town meeting occurs, the budget would be the budget that has governed the entire conversation. I've worked over the weekend and the last two days to get to some finality. The policy you passed tonight on the third reading required me to identify no less than $400,000 in potential savings as one of the first ways we would try to adapt to the cut in revenue that we anticipate coming from the state. That deficit, I've revised upward based on a couple of additional assumptions about our cost structure, mostly reconciling our, our actual health insurance census to the budget line item, and then forecasting for fiscal '21. We've always been very conservative about this, for good reason. If we have money left over in the health insurance account, we typically go to fall town meeting and ask for it to go to OPEB anyway. But we also don't know how many people will join our health insurance program during the year because of a qualifying event, and it's especially true this year with all the economic uncertainty that spouses may, or partners may be losing jobs, and those employees who are still working for the town would then pick up the health insurance burden for that household. So we can't budget down to the last skinny dollar on this line item because that would be very, it's a significant exposure because the policies are so expensive for just one family plan. So that being the case, a revenue shortfall of $923,132, more or less, generates a deficit on the fiscal '21 budget that we had anticipated in early March would be our working document. It brought us to $727,199 in the red, so we now have to close that gap primarily through spending cuts and some free cash.
Bless you.
Thank you. So I was tasked with finding $400,000. I am provided you through email to the three members who are attending remotely, and I can... Actually, one of those copies is mine. This is the budget presentation. I've identified options for fiscal year 2021 of approximately $656,438. I am only recommending that approximately $364,028 worth of those options actually be implemented, and that the remainder of close to $511,083, which, because I'm adding future years, there were some things that we could not implement in time for fiscal '21, but we could do for fiscal '22. So I guess you could say, overall, I'm, I'm well over $800,000 worth of options. We save, we hold those other half million back and watch the environment develop and see what we need to do. On Appendix A, you can see in some detail what the recommendations are, and I'll go through them slowly. We typically budget money to go to OPEB every year. I'm going to recommend that we budget $0 this year to go to OPEB, so that takes $50,000 out of the budget. There's two reasons why I think that's a prudent thing to do. One is our retiree plans, our senior plans, are so much less expensive than they used to be because we went to the Strategic Health Group, that we're going to ask the actuaries to recalculate our OPEB unfunded liability because we believe it will drop significantly. And if we need a break for one year, almost as a reward for having been prudent the way we manage those plans, it might be appropriate. But more importantly, as the year develops, we can still go to special town meeting and call for surpluses in the health insurance to go to OPEB. So we're not going to abandon the funding plan completely, we just might want to take a, a break from it in the budget itself. Next, we anticipate a retirement in one of our departments. I'd like to hold that position open for six months. That generates about $48,330. For all municipal side budgets with expense accounts larger than $2,500, I would ask them all to take a haircut of 2.5%, with a couple of exceptions that should be fairly That generates about $38,509. And I keep that impact, so that haircut is permanent. I don't restore the funds in future years of the model, so that becomes the new baseline, would be 2.5% lower than what was anticipated in the budget. I think we should set the COLA at zero for both non-union employees and union employees for one year. For, on the non-union side, that generates $37,988. On the union side, that generates about $16,246. The largest item is to hold the increase of local contributions to local schools at 1% year over year, so a 1% budget for the next two years. And I want to do that so that new leadership over there can plan with some certainty that while the economy's hurting this badly and revenue is down this much, that that is actually what they have to do. So instead of spreading things out or just trying to kick the can down the road and get through one year and, and then come back and try to get a 4% in, in the second year, the plan has to be put in place for a 1% year over year for two years in a row. In year one, that generates savings that need to be net. I would anticipate that with a 1%, that they would have to do some layoffs, and so I budgeted in an increase in our unemployment line, because we're self-insured for unemployment compensation, unemployment compensation. So a net of $121,499. And the last thing that I recommend is a reorganization of the Community Development Department. There are a lot of bullet points here. We would be exposing ourselves, again, to additional unemployment compensation expense. I would have to realign compensation to a new job description. We would use technology to leverage some of the time and effort, and that would have an annual licensing cost. I would score the setup cost for that to capital item. The health insurance impact would have to be estimated on that because it's a little bit fuzzy, and that's where some of this gets a little bit difficult to calculate. But the estimated savings there in year one would be about $51,456. I have four options that I am not recommending, but I have identified them as something that we need to think about if we are still in very difficult straits by fiscal '23. One of them would be to reduce the town's share of the health insurance working rate from 80% to 75%. I'm especially reluctant to do this, and I'm not recommending it because while we are more generous than many other towns in picking up 80% of the health insurance premium for our employees, we stayed that way because we're, our plan itself, the plan design, is less generous than the plan designs in the communities around us. So the quid pro quo, if you want to call it that, was, we'll continue to pick up 80% of the cost of the premium, or the working rate, which we call it now, because you're accepting a lesser plan. However, it's a very large line item, and if everybody's at 75%, now the only upside to this is we are putting in place very aggressive measures to save money for the trust fund. So we have voted three very important initiatives in the health insurance group. One of them is that our consultant, Gallagher, manages so many large health insurance contracts across the Commonwealth, that he decided to leverage their bargaining power with the reinsurance companies to make a number of changes, not changes, but agreements that lock in our rates and tend to minimize the cost of reinsurance. Reinsurance is the policy that picks up our super-high claims, and there's a lot of practices around reinsurance, that if you can get them to not do, or to not pursue with you, you can manage those rates. One of the things we, we've said is, we want no lasering in perpetuity, so they will not identify and decline to insure any of our covered lives. They have to insure all of the lives in our group, but they can laser upon entry. So if we get any new groups from the outside want to join us, there's a one-time shot for the reinsurer to laser. It's basically cherry picking, and only the best risk exposure would come into the group. We also use this to, you know, leverage rate caps in the future. The second big initiative the group is taking is a carve-out for specialty pharmacy. We, we've voted to join a group called Optimed, which reviews the use of specialty drugs by our claim pool and identifies opportunities for savings. On many occasions, a very expensive drug may be administered in a hospital setting or a medical office setting with very high expenses, and the exact same drug made by the exact same manufacturer, the exact same dose administered by somebody with the exact same qualifications at home, might cost only 30% of what is coming through the claim pool. Voluntary, that's the most important thing, is that individuals can only join voluntarily. The last major initiative is management of a specific disease condition. We have 93 people who are tracking with a diagnosis amongst the three towns of diabetes. Seventeen of those people are generating close to $2 million worth of claims a year. If they voluntarily join, it's Abacus that runs it, a program for management of their disease, and they are in compliance, their out-of-pocket expenses will be covered. So in other words, we become more generous. We encourage people to be in compliance with their plan, and what that tends to do is it gets people to stay healthier longer and therefore reduces their claims experience. They're happier as individuals, we're better off economically as a trust fund. So it's a win-win. We're hoping that our employees who might fit into that category would participate in the voluntary program. Why does this matter? Well, if we're bringing the cost of this down at the same time that we might increase the employees' co-share, it may actually net. It certainly won't be a high-impact move, but I wouldn't recommend thinking about this until after fiscal '22. Freezing all compensation steps for one year is also not recommended. We built into the compensation system for the town the notion that the longer you work for the town, the more valuable you are because your experience informs your day-to-day activities. And that is completely separate and apart from a COLA. COLA is Cost of Living Adjustment, which uniformly affects everybody pretty much the same. So if you take that away, you're being fair to everyone. If you take steps away, you're not penalizing people who might be at the top step who didn't get a COLA, but they, they're not eligible for a step, so they lose nothing, and then your newer employees who are making their way up the table would lose a substantial amount. It's a 2.25% step. The largest union in the town isn't agreeing to any reduction in steps, and I don't want to force that policy on our people if it can't be done on the other side. The last two, again, I've mentioned this already, closed library, regionalized public safety dispatch. I don't think we need to get to such extraordinary measures unless we're looking at running out of free cash, and we don't have anything else we can possibly do. In other words, if we were back to where we were three years ago before the override, under that much stress, where we're burning through $800,000, $900,000 worth of free cash every year, that's the only way you would consider taking these actions. The, the sum of all of this, if we go with the recommendations, the savings are somewhere between $353,000 and $364,000. The model, listen, I can build sophisticated models, but at some point, there's a diminishing return. So if I call for an option where we might reduce a position, the COLA savings might be double-counted in my chart, okay? So, and the health insurance savings might be double-counted. So there's about $11,000 worth of noise that I'm going to fix before I distribute this to FinCom or to the public, but, listen, $11,000 on a $30 million budget's just not a whole heck of a lot, so I'm not too worried about finding it and fixing it because ultimately I'll go with the model says, because the model's more rigorous than, than the back-of-the-envelope stuff that's in the fiscal impact statement. But that's where we are. None of these things can happen unless both the board and FinCom, ultimately FinCom, present it so in the budget. But I think this is a fair balance. I've tried my best to minimize our use of certified free cash and not appropriate those funds to the greatest extent possible to stretch them out, so that if the economy continues to worsen or stays bad for a long time, we would still be able to deliver services to the people of the town. If you were asking me what my position is purely from a financial point of view, basically, you know, your cutthroat private sector, I would do all of these things. No kidding, right? Because... Because if we were running lean and mean and we were reporting to stockholders who had tremendous amount of value at risk, and if you didn't take the action, they could sue you and things like that, but they're not, private sector companies are not necessarily delivering a public good, things that people have bargained for and expect to be there. I think that's especially true of the library. And for that reason, I would hold off those cuts and not do them for a couple of years unless we really, really had to. But hopefully, within the next 24 hours, I will finish working on this part of the budget and will not see it again except to explain it to people, and decision-makers can make their decisions and we'll implement them. The third ball that we have in the air right now is the month-to-month budget. The department heads have been wonderful in calculating what their month-to-month expenditures are. The form became live only yesterday. It's a very simple form, okay? So this incredibly detailed budget that we will go through with the spreadsheet and lines and lines and lines and the chart of accounts and everything else, it reduces basically to three lines for a month-to-month budget. And their expectation is, in the narrative, you'll explain to them why you're much farther above 1/12th than they would anticipate you would be. But one thing, I won't call this thing as a 1/12th budget. That is the dumbest thing anybody has called this ever, because no municipality works that way. You have large numbers of, amounts of expenses that occur in one month, and the next month you might be slow because you're satisfying large contracts or prepayment discounts on retirement or insurance in year one of the fiscal, month one of the fiscal year, but not month two. So we'll get to that, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Much of the budget, though, going on a month-to-month basis for three months, we will be front-loading to some degree in order to meet the at-least 1/12th requirement of the statute as it was passed. The last thing I have for you, Mr. Chairman, I don't wanna say we're winding down the food program, but people are self-selecting and the participation is decreasing as the sense of the urgency around the pandemic is decreasing. So we're down about 20 or 30 people, is my understanding. I would like to draw this to a conclusion if possible, events permitting, by the end of the fiscal year, so June 30, so that we stay within the sweet spot and we make sure that everything we're doing is truly reimbursable. What we do beyond that is another conversation, because food security has become a major priority across the summer months, and the principal concern isn't COVID-positive people who are quarantining, it's schoolchildren who've been out for this whole time and haven't been participating in the school lunch program. We'll take another shot at being able to work with the school department and make sure that we are leveraging funds made available by other governments, state and federal governments, to assure that this is not neglected. Incendiary to this is the community garden project. So we have volunteers who've banded together and donated items to produce as much fresh food as we can for the food bank. It's very simple to administer. Everything gets picked and brought to the food bank down at St. Dennis or any other project entity that wants to accept it, if the food pantry doesn't need it. We were out there today. I took half a day of vacation. We were out. We are using a piece of town property that's behind a fence, a nice, tall, strong fence to keep the deer away. But the senior center director, the adult social center director and I, and Jen from the Adult Social Center, and Mr. Skinner from the Board of Health, who's also, I believe, very active at the Adult Social Center, the four of us planted a pretty substantial garden in about three hours this afternoon. The soil is wonderful, it's donated by GBI, and part of the plants, I donated most of it, but Gary Vecchione from Lovey's donated the rest. So it was very generous of him to do that from his business, and we stayed loyal to a Douglas resident. The business is not in Douglas, but we gave him some business today. But I'm, you know, I think this is a really important thing. We're looking for volunteers to help maintain the thing, water it, weed it, and help. It's a way to bring people together. We always have to remember that there are many amongst us who are less fortunate, and if this is one way we can help on a purely voluntary and donation basis, then happy to do so. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Matt, thank you for your time up at the community garden today. So that's, throughout this entire pandemic and everything else, I've been very pleased the amount of volunteerism and people stepping up to try and help out other members of the community. Absolutely thrilled with our department heads that have just, like, decided to move from department head to section chief and just nail these programs and make sure that our residents were well-cared for. I'm hopeful, but not optimistic, that when we make a second swag at working with the schools on continuing a food program over the summer, that they will opt to be a little bit more receptive and willing to play ball with the town. But I also like to caution them that a strike too would not bode well overall.
You know, Mr. Chairman, the one thing I meant to say that I didn't say was congratulations to the class of 2020.
Yes.
We'd all be remiss if we didn't acknowledge, what a terrible year to be a senior. It really stinks for them. It's part of life to be a senior in high school and enjoy that last year, and some of those things were robbed, but I think the high school did a nice job of trying to make up for it, and best wishes to all the kids as they go off to their next step of their journey.
Yeah, that parade was pretty awesome, actually. I wasn't like, I got stuck behind it and I wasn't even upset. I'm like, this is such a good cause, I'm like, I'm just gonna sit here and enjoy the traffic. So I don't have anything else, Mr. Vice Chairman?
Nothing, sir.
So what's going on, Mr. Bonin?
I'm good, thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Davis?
Very nice presentation from the town administrator.
Mr. Hughes?
I love that, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. With all that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Anyone want a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Under nine.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Hughes, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
All right, gentlemen.